Just the drafts, I think now. These are just the, these aren't even the minutes. Now let's go through the other, the project. These are just really, really rough draft. I was going to make these over.
Yeah, I was thinking about mentioning to you, everybody's got to sit and read this.
Yeah, they're just. I would just lay this over.
Nah, we could, we had, there was nothing.
They literally had it. They're just the ones that I can sure check. Uh, we'd be sorry, we didn't, yeah, I was explaining. Okay.
All right, call the order for the, um, Wednesday, January eighth, twenty twenty five, EBA meeting, um, and clear up the roll call.
Uh, your stock?
Yes.
Here.
Hagen.
Here.
Mead.
Here.
Smith. Swanson, absent. Uh, Wegman.
Here.
We need a motion for approval, folks, we're gonna lay over the minutes. Need a motion to lay over the minutes from the previous meeting.
Okay, motion, lay over the minutes.
I'll make a second.
And roll call, please.
Motion by Wegman, second by.
Mead.
Mead, okay.
Roll call?
Your stock?
Yes.
Baluch.
Yes.
Hagen.
Yes.
Mead.
Yes.
Wegman.
Yes.
Uh, new business number two, ZBA two zero two four dash zero one seven has been asked to be laid over. Again, anybody have thoughts on that or?
Is there a problem or?
It's just, it's just finalizing through, it's more of a application, application, so they're just working on some design issues and combining property.
Okay, good.
They're just working, I guess, have some time to like continue that, they're, they're working with Evan and his staff right now.
And a motion to lay over that.
I think that was a good construction.
Uh, motion by Baluch.
God, I'm bigger.
Second by Wegman. You will help?
Leach. Yes.
Hagen. Mead.
Yes.
Wegman.
Yeah.
And your stock?
Yes. Yee, twenty twenty five dash zero zero one, decided review for approval of subcutters square footage, trusted storage structure located at one one two one two Main Street. Apparent rustle, glass, lint, flowers. Ray, do you want to tell us about your project real quick?
It's just a small little storage facility for, just cold storage for aluminum and brake metal, shower door metal. Put up behind a privacy fence.
But no heat, no electricity.
No heat, no electricity.
Evan, anything?
Sure, um, like the way it says, this is really kind of benign structure that'd be put up, it's cold storage, um, it meets the, uh, the height and lot coverage aspects of the zoning code. The applicant has agreed that it's gonna be ten feet away from the lot lines, which is what's required. So nothing, nothing bulk wise that we need to fix or, or is an issue or anything. Uh, while we were looking through the, Brandon Boggs, the village engineer, and I were looking through the site, uh, we noticed that it would, the, the, the rear area of the sites mostly gravel right now, um, and it's in the process of being paved kind of, um, as time and budget permits for the business, so, um, just before that accessory structure would be put in the ground, that, uh, it would have to be put on a paved surface, that's, I think that's the first condition in the report, uh, yes. So, uh, again, nothing, nothing of note that sticks out that it's gonna be, uh, an issue or anything. Uh, it's pretty well hidden behind that privacy fence, it's not gonna be visible from the road, um. Yeah, just that, uh, that, that paving issue and then, um, the form and fee, so.
Hey, any options? Very straightforward.
Yeah.
Right?
What's, what's this one?
That's it, I, I had an existing property that I took it down from.
And you're gonna just put it.
Right, right.
And then it, he, it says that you're gonna repaint it now.
I'm gonna paint it the same color as the same building that's there.
Not that we can see it anywhere, right, from the road, but.
Yeah, we'll see a little bit, but not.
So, motion, uh, Hagen, uh, Baluch, second, all right, second was Baluch. Let's see, uh, Hagen's.
Yeah.
Mead.
Yes.
Wegman.
Yes.
Your stock?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, boy.
Perfect.
Those are nice project as usual. E A twenty twenty five dash zero zero two, public carry for approval of a special use permit uh, for the continued operation and repair business located at fifty four fourteen Edith Lane, uh, known as R and L Autobody and Katie, did you, um, speak to your project?
We purchased R and L Autobody on September twenty seventh. We purchased everything, including the tax ID number, the building, the business, everything. All the employees stayed, in fact, added a new employee to the business. Nothing else has changed. They had a special use permit before, but they told us since it was a sale of the business, we had to get a new one, so.
Evan?
Um, yeah, that's pretty, that's pretty accurate, um. The original special use permit had a condition that it either expired within ten years or upon sale of the business, so, uh, this came about through a zoning verification letter that, um, uh, the applicant was seeking out. Um, and just based on that letter, we, we told the state that, um, there was really no issue with, um, the operation right now and that the applicant was gonna be coming back in the near future for that renewal that the original special use required. Um, again, no changes in the operation, the building, the site or anything, uh, it's gonna be continuing on just as it is. Um, uh, we did, again, kind of similar to the last item, uh, Brandon and I had seen that a portion of the, uh, rear of the site was unpaved, um, and a portion of it was within, um, uh, another parcel. So we're just, uh, adding to the conditions on here that, um, before twenty twenty six, that those parcels get combined in some way and then, um, that before May fifth, that the gravel area of the parking lot in that rear section would be paved as well.
Evan, did you send an email to me or something to that effect?
Um, I don't, I don't believe so, I think when we had maybe talked with that zoning verification letter that I had mentioned that there was something, that the parcels weren't combined and that there, there was a little bit of separation, but that wouldn't have been, that paving issue wouldn't have been part of that.
It's not an issue, we'll be happy to do it, I just, that was the first I'd heard of it.
It's not an issue though.
But you want a letter of documentation? If, if we have to have it, I mean, if we have to have it by May fifth, we'll do it by May fifth. It's only the gravel part?
Right, yeah.
So in the past, I see in our report, no serious nuances or infractions to the village code that holds true with what you've, uh, reviewed, Evan?
Correct.
The original special use permit had expired though, is that true?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
The original special use permit, if it, if it was issued in two thousand thirteen and going for ten years, it, it had expired, hadn't it?
Correct, that is correct, and that's what we saw with the zoning verification letter, um, we had seen that it was, um, expired and there was a question as to whether the sale of the stock was what we were gonna classify as a sale of the business, but, um, even so, you're correct, that it would, it would have been expired in twenty, uh, twenty three.
You bought the, the property and all this, wasn't it?
And you've been running the business consistently?
Yeah. And are you combining the two parcels then? We bought both the parcels, when you say combine, what do you mean?
Um, Evan, you're recommending that they, in your report, you explain that?
Right, yeah, so that would just be a, basically a boundary line adjustment, so we would just have you come in and get approved for, um, just moving maybe that kind of southern end of the southern end of the northernmost parcel, so the top parcel, if you want to classify it as that, just moving that up so it fits all the parking lot within it.
They want to change the boundary lines.
I don't, yeah, I'm, I'm understanding that, I'm just thinking, the parcels are west and east, are they not?
Um, let me bring up, I think I have one just up here. Oh yeah, I'm sorry, it's, yeah, it's, Joe, can I share my screen? I don't know if I can.
You should be able to. If not.
Uh, it doesn't say, it's saying I'm not able to.
All right, right now.
So yeah, I was kind of visualizing it, I don't know, can you guys see, can you see it?
Yeah.
Yep.
So yeah, just moving either this line right here, um, further this way, or we could just, it might just be easier to just combine these two and make them one parcel. Um, I'm not sure if you guys have any plans to sell this, or I don't know if you could even get access for it.
No, we don't, we have no plans to sell it.
Okay, I, I, and then maybe it just might be easier to come, like, just combine it into one parcel, um, again, before, what did I put in there, twenty twenty six, um, to just turn it into one, that would just be, um, uh, we're actually reworking that part of the code right now, uh, through a certified survey map, we might be able to, but Joe, is it through the Secretary of State?
Can you pull that back up really quick?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Um, so this is also another strange part of this, this is not to do with this application here, but it's also another issue that we got into when we were reviewing this. Can you scroll to north, so we can see that a little bit above it? So that northern parcel there is where the solar field is going to be installed. If you note, um, there's actually no access to the roadway from this R and L property. Um, because, well, there's access to the roadway, but the roadway is actually private property. It's so, we've actually been working with the owners of the that parcel, where the roadway connection is there, and actually they're gonna be taking that portion, that northern portion of, or the the end of the roadway to the village, so that will actually become village roadway again. So this is one of those where we sort of found quite a few little issues as we're reviewing through this and trying to help clean it up and get it all, all working forward. So, yeah, that, that'll be sort of combining the parcels, because we split across those two parcels, and also making sure there's actual road access, roadway access to that building itself. Does that, yeah, that back, the, uh, the back portion, the front portion obviously is the roadway, but the back portion is actually, um, attached to private property. But we do have an agreement with the owners of that large property there to actually dedicate that roadway to the village, and it'll be, it'll be donated back over, um, so this will actually be the roadway that you see there will actually be official roadway. Portion we're not showing.
But does that matter if you're combining them?
Yeah, it wouldn't matter if you're combining them, no, but we still, we still need to get the, we saw that issue of that roadway being up there, that's probably village, probably should be village roadway, the village maintains and plows and, and goes there, so we've discovered that it's actually on sort of separate property. But you're right, no, if it's combined, it wouldn't matter, because there is access on a, southern or southwestern portion.
So that just kind of cleans it up and then it also.
It's a whole thing up there.
It requires, it, it makes it so that the parking lot is within.
The parcel, the whole parking lot will be on one parcel, so it won't be overlapping on there, um, and also that northern parcel, if it was its own parcel, or if it gets split off, we'd actually have access to the roadway.
And that's an easy process to do.
Very easy, we're taking care of that, the village is taking care of that, um, right now, actually, Attorney Green is working on that. I think we talked to him yesterday about it, so.
We knew that the solar front was going in, but do you know where exactly on that property it's gonna be?
Yes, north, uh, you want to scroll out a little bit, Evan, it's gonna be far that northern, northern portion of it. So right towards, yeah, right up that way. And then they're splitting the bottom portion so that, in theory, uh, is it Edith Lane right there, right, that they can, that could, in theory, expand out and they could develop that lower portion for commercial or, or probably industrial or commercial, because we've
potentially would be interested in purchasing the section that is attached to the back part of our property.
Um, if you want to contact us tomorrow, we can give you the owner's name, I mean, we'll, we're not really part of that, but we can absolutely tell you who the contacts are for that. So the, the owner of that parcel is not changing of that big property, they're just leasing the northern half of it to the solar field for a long-term lease, but I believe their intention is to split it the south, southern portion off of there, there. Um, and do that at some point, but we'll give you the contact information, you can contact, talk to them and then.
Okay, one other quick question about the solar front, are they gonna be using Edith Lane as an access point to install the?
Yes, so that will be expanded out, this is, I'm, I'm outside the scout scope here, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, but they're gonna be, that roadway will be expanded north, um, as sort of an access road, like a gravel access road up to where they're gonna actually be installing the the solar panels, and then they're made, they're buildings there.
So what kind of road is that, I mean, what?
I don't have the plans for, yeah, I, I others can be either just, it might just be gravel. It won't be a roadway, it'll just be like a, an access, or access, we've got lost to it.
Access drive?
Access drive, maintenance drive, it's not actually a road that can be used yet for any sort store, driving on it generally, just that initial installation, so.
So who do, what'd I call tomorrow, who should I ask for?
Uh, you can ask for Janelle, I think you've probably been talking with her previously, yeah, she can give you that contact of the, of their owners.
But you already know who owns it, so.
I think it is, um.
Ferguson.
Yeah, I think it's, I think he owns it, so, yeah, I think by, his intention was just to keep it and lease that northern part, so, yeah, people, but she, he's got, she has her ex, uh, the contact.
But I can also reach out with, uh, steps for the lot combination too, so.
That's a very.
We'll just combine the parcels.
That's a really quick, easy process. Pick up one for me, you submit, we sign off on it, you submit the tiny, and they combine them.
I guess I have one more question. So I know you said, uh, by May fifth to pave that other gravel section, the small gravel section. In the next couple of years, one or two years, we want to expand and double the size of the building, which would probably go over that gravel area. So would we still need to do that in the short term?
Um.
Plan to put a new building there in the next eighteen months?
For the next eighteen months, I mean, the, we can be flexible about that a little bit, we could either say, I mean, the ZBA members could amend that to extend it to, I don't know, sometime far in the future, or we could, um, amend the condition to say something like, um, if no development happens on the site within two years, then, um, the gravel portion of the rear area, rear parking area shall be paved. Um, I don't know if that's something ZBA wants to do, uh, that's up to you guys.
I guess it's one of those issues where we, as we were reviewing it, going through it, we see that, we saw that there are, you know, a portion of it has to be, you have to have paved parking, uh, in the village, uh, for any sort of parking lots, have to be paved. And there's just that one portion now that we've discovered is not, so that's why that came up. Should definitely be paved at some point, I guess you guys can discuss.
It's not very large, so I mean, if we need to pave it, we'll pave it.
But that's not for parking of like customers or.
No, no customers go on that side, it's, it's mostly where tow trucks drop off vehicles that have been in collisions, and then we bring them into the shop the next day. So.
And I think we were probably, I know the village prefer that it gets used. Whether the timing of it, I don't know if you can do it now and then. It's just, you know, steel coating or black, black topping, I guess.
So this seems to be something that should have been talked about with Evan and you before it got to this point. It's hard to sit here, because I've said in plenty of meetings where we've gotten heated discussions about paving parking lots, used cars, stuff, but something the village wants done. And where, if the, if the extension of the building doesn't happen and the parking lot's not paved, where does that get caught? Who's gonna see that and say, hey, you gotta, you gotta pave, or I need plans to get the building extended?
I even go through a, a, but it's like, that's, that's why the recommendation is to have it paved, but it's like, if you want to remove that, I don't know if you're, is, is it okay if I remove that? You can certainly remove that, but, um, recommendation is to have it paved.
If you were gonna expand it, when would you know? When would you have plans?
I think we wanted to at least see six months of financials before we decided whether or not it was, you know, we've only had it for three months. Um, ideally, we probably would want to see a full year's worth of financials, just because of the seasonal changes. Um, but again, it's not a very large portion that's gravel right now, so if we need to pave it, we can pave it.
Yeah, it's currently legal and conforming, right, it was putting many years ago, far before we had the requirement, um. I mean, yeah, eventually, like, if you look for a year on it, put a year, that's what you're looking for, you want it done out, you don't want the paving, um, you know, it's obviously up to you, that's.
I mean, I understand it's kind of pointless to pave it and then tear it up soon. But I don't, I don't want to see it slip through the cracks and we've enforced paving on other people and then have this not happen. I, you guys, any? Any, any joy, you've been here through all.
She mentioned eighteen months. I, I think we can put, put something in, a red flag at eighteen months, we review it. And if indeed you started construction or have intention to construction, so be it. Would that be agreeable?
I'd agree with that.
Yeah, I would too, so we could recommend that.
As part of the special use permit, because realize, that comes back to you to revoke that, right, that goes, that's where it gets reviewed and revoked, so, um, yeah, eighteen months on special use permits condition, as opposed to the May first.
Yeah. Even May fifth would be tough.
I'm sorry.
Soon.
Yeah.
We just had the whole, all the blacktop area sealed, when, right after we bought it, within like six weeks of buying it, we had everything sealed before the winter. So if we, if I had known that, we could have done it.
Yeah, let's just move that out, eighteen months and.
Damn.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good, I'm, I'm just more was, just curious why if it was a ten year and we're at twelve years, is it because there was, there was gonna be a sale and that's why they held up?
It's because the village should not have their records going back to, on those, retracting special use permits.
So do these dates now get flagged to somebody on staff when they come off?
Yeah, we track these, yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we have a lot other specialty, usually the, the, um, auto type places, those were mostly had expiration dates, a lot of our other special use permits don't necessarily have expiration dates on them or, uh, end dates to them, but yeah, a lot of the used cars and obviously anything that's a little more generally the car sales, car sales and then also car, buy your auto battery repairs, usually have, uh, and date, I don't know, just to start safe with the village has done.
So flagged, I mean, does it kick up on somebody's computer when they come to work in the morning?
Does this new special use permit have a expiration date?
Expiration date, not, but, but is, I was just saying, they apply to certain things.
Yeah, there's not, there's a, uh, there's not recommended expiration on this, it's been there, I think probably at this point, but they're learning off that we, we've seen it. Usually it's like, sometimes it's the new, sometimes the new ones, like we weren't sure how they were gonna be maintained or who was gonna run them. There's that recommendation on this. And the ZBA, as you can put one on, if you would like one, but the staff does not recommend, uh, expiration.
Well, without an expiration date, um, unless there were infractions or something, and then the village would, would, uh, move to revoke special use, the special use permits, so I don't think we need an expiration date until there's a problem or something, and then.
Sale also triggers having to revoke it.
I don't think we have a.
Would it now?
Trigger on this one, no, on this one, we can't have it as a sale.
That was part of the.
That was the original.
On the original special use.
Okay, and so to be clear, the, the two parcels will be combined January first, twenty twenty six, is that correct? It's true, leave this recommendation as is.
Yeah, it would, before then it would have to be done, but again, that's a, a, a pretty simple process that, um, I can share, I can share with, um, Katie, uh, after, after this meeting.
Okay, that all works for you then?
Yes.
What we talked about, the eighteen months.
Yes.
Paving gives you time to kind of decide what you're. So, uh, our verbiage on the on the paving for, uh, condition would be, I mean, here we can just say eighteen months from this date, you guys will fill in up, exact.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Everybody's good with eighteen months?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, fire department, no concerns? By the shop?
No.
Fire?
Yeah, we, we stop by once a year at least.
Pre-planned?
Update our contacts, we didn't realize. Okay, there's a new owner, but that's out of the menu.
So, any thoughts?
No, it, 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 it's the flag here that I'm kind of confused about. Did we buy a new software system? Or something, Joe, that flags?
No, we use, we use our, uh, outlook, teams, we use teams, but we have our. No, we use, we use our, uh, outlook teams. We use teams, but we have a planner. I'm sure we, we have a planner for all of the, all the stuff as we go through that does, it alerts us on our, on our planner system.
So that's been implemented years ago?
It was implemented one year ago.
Okay.
January first of twenty twenty-five.
That's, that's.
Sorry, twenty twenty-four.
Explanation.
So two years ago, when the ten year was up, we didn't have it.
That's right.
We haven't, you know.
So I, I.
We find them as we go, we see them, you know, we see, people know or remember that there's expirations, but we have not done the best about tracking.
I don't think we didn't have it, though. Some people were on a seven-year tour, tour. Some people were on a four-year plan and nobody knew anything about anybody. So a couple of years ago. Remember that?
Spend a lot of time figuring out those things.
All right, we need, uh, a motion to approve subject to the two conditions and order being changed. Number two to eighteen months from this date.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion, wait, seconds. Me?
Yes.
Wegman?
Yes.
Chris Doc?
Yes.
Looch?
Yes.
Huglen?
Yes.
Also, thank you.
Thanks.
And then you'll reach out tomorrow and sort of?
Yep.
Now, you might, yeah, give a hold of, we can give you that.
Great, thank you.
Uh, any old business? Anyone here? Something?
I guess what we were talking about at the, so that road on Edith Lane will be like the access for construction to keep them off of.
There's not going.
There's no other way to get.
Not going, there's not affection there. It just means the only way to that property.
Bike path on one side.
Yeah.
Yep, oh, it is the only.
Yeah, I think there's like, I think it was the trees there in the bike path. I mean, there's a creek there, part of it too.
Yeah, you can't, that's, I, you know, if you walk the bike path there, you can't see really, unless maybe in the winter when there's no foliage, but.
Well, I guess I'm a little confused. So when I look at it from here.
It's a bike path?
Oh, that's not. Nothing down here. Well, they own everything.
That pro.
That property is all of us.
Yeah, the property that Evan had up there.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that, oh, you're saying probably that triangle property is one part stolen?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Put down on the sand, I guess.
Do you have that still up, Evan, by any chance?
No, wind just lowered.
This is.
Down, that's fine.
Is that the property that's like split somehow or you're on the south end of it? Comment, did you have a north end of that?
That's probably, it's over there. The American aluminum is right next to it and that is split. Yeah, you're right. There is probably split there because American aluminum is right north of it. Actually, this might all be in, that all might be in Comed. The one north of it is split. The one north is split, yeah.
All right, maybe.
That one right there is split, yeah. I think this is probably all Comed. I think it's just that back corner of American aluminum is Comed. If you guys, please scroll down again. So yeah, that's the, that triangle parcel there, that's what we're talking about. Yeah, the only access to that is Egas Lane across there. So part of me, when we talk to the solar people, you've guys seen that already come through, but when we approved that, is requiring them to have that available, to have that connection across at least. So like in theory, they could, they could have split it and developed it a little bit, um, through there and not just completely block off that. Because they wanted to split those parcels at one point separately. And it's a strange little area though.
I drove back there this morning because I'd never, that's one of those areas of town where unless you're doing business, you don't go down there. And it's, it's, it's really, it's pretty neat back there. It looks like where the, it's not paved is, is like an employee parking area.
Yeah, they do a good job keeping it, yeah, keeping it up. It's just the strange thing was that, that roadway that we found that is not in the, that in the, yeah, village driveway, so. And I mean, that, yeah, it's just strange. It makes that a lot unboldable, really, but they're combining it now. But yeah, it's just a weird, a little weird little fluky thing, but we are getting that fixed, so. And the property owner has been very cooperative, like, let's do that. Anything else? Old business?
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'm making motion.
I'll second.
Motion, me, second, Looch? Chris Doc?
Yes.
Looch?
Yes.
Huglen?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Wegman?
Yes.
Return at six oh six.
Thank you very much.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was referring to.
Thanks, everybody.